Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission Meeting of July 7, 2025. For viewers watching at home, some members of the public may be participating via video conference or teleconference. Let's please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Bus?
Present.
Commissioner Lanson absent, Commissioner McMahon absent, Vice Chair Tyler Kettlehut?
Here.
Chair Ferris.
Here. Tonight, we have with us Deputy Community Development Director Fabiola Zalaya Meliker. Are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances at this time?
Thank you, Chair. Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Now's the time for public comment. At this time, any person may address the Commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on the evening's agenda. Should the Commission wish to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public, the issue will be referred to staff or scheduling on a future agenda. Anyone who would like to speak under public comments must fill out a speaker card in chambers or click Request to Speak on the Agenda to receive instructions before the public comments portion of the agenda is called. Speakers' remarks should be addressed to the Commission as a whole, not to an individual commissioner or staff member. Unless otherwise provided by the Commission, speakers are limited to five minutes. A screen will show you the remaining time you have. We, at this point in time, have three public comments. I will ask and I will apologize if I mispronounce your name in advance. First is Shreya Datta, followed by Pat Brown. And if you could state your name and city of residence.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Shreya Dara, and I'm a proud resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm here tonight as a part of an advocacy group working to urge and encourage Ventura County Board of Supervisors to opt into AB 626, the Homemade Food Operations Act. AB 626 creates a path for home cooks to legally operate under MECO permits, micro enterprise home kitchen operations, by following strict health and safety standards. This allows residents like me to safely prepare and sell foods from our own home kitchens. For me, this is more than just a policy. It's personal. I immigrated from India 25 years ago and have long dreamed of sharing the diverse and vibrant flavors of Indian cuisine with my community. Food is a bridge that brings culture, it connects cultures, and MECOs offer a beautiful, inclusive way to bring people together. I'm also a scientist by profession with a PhD in food microbiology, so I very well understand the importance of maintaining high health standards, and MECO is built with those safeguards in place. Inspection, training, and clear guidelines all are required. MECOs offer a lifetime lifeline for small entrepreneurs, especially women, immigrants, and caregivers who may not have access to commercial kitchen but have the skills, passion, and drive to contribute to our local economy. I urge you to support the MECO program. Let's allow homegrown talent to shine safely and responsibly while enriching the cultural and culinary fabric of Ventura County. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Brown, followed by Nancy Dabu.
Good evening, Commission and Council members, or I'm not quite sure. My name is Pat Brown. I am a registered nurse resident of Camarillo, but I'm here as a county lead for the group that is urging you to adopt AB 626 MECOs, or micro enterprise home kitchens. I want to impress upon you that there are well over 19 jurisdictions now out of the, I think, 50 or 60 that have already adopted since the bill was activated in 2018. And to date, there has been, out of over a million meals served, there's been only one foodborne illness incident, which is far better than any of the brick and mortar. I want to take you back to 2020 when the pandemic hit and recognize when we had to close down all of our food-producing places and how many Michelin-starred chefs were out of work. If we had had the MECOs in place, we would have had them cooking out of their homes and working and helping. The other fun part about MECOs is that the cities can use them for feeding groups of people that are challenged bringing their own meals, Meals on Wheel program, area on aging, can use them to do the specialized dinners for people with special needs like vegan or special cultural meals. I can't impress upon you hard enough how much this would make the resiliency of our entire county go up. To date, LA County and Santa Barbara County both have MECOs in place without any problems. And we're becoming yet again another drive-through situation where they're not, we're not becoming the cradle for young entrepreneurs and other businesses that want to start out or even just want to stay small. Instead, there's a lot of concern about all these untaxed, unlicensed, uninspected, essentially MECOs, but pop-up places that if they were all included, you know, you now have a revenue stream coming into the cities. You now have people who want to really cook for other people. You have neighborhoods that can take care of their own in a crisis, and goes on from there. So as far as nuisance concerns, no nuisances, except I think there was some signage questions, which was written out of, in the law. The law is really quite restrictive for any kind of small entrepreneur. I know that you'll do your own homework, and you're probably well aware of the bill. Previously, the county had brought up the information and brought it to the cities. The counties are not required to do this, but they asked the cities to write a letter, and all the cities at that time back in 2020 had not done a, had not accepted the idea of MECOs and then wrote the letter to the county, and so the county did, acted upon that. That's when there were no proponents. We now have proponents. We now have people who are coming to the city commissions, the planning, everybody says, "I want to cook out of my house." The proviso for these folks to cook also allows them to pay their rent. So now you're preventing homelessness. So I'm going to urge you to review again AB 626. And also, we're going to be asking the city council to write a letter back to the county and say, "No, this is a good idea. There's already proponents at the county level, Matt LeVere. There's the Economic Development Forum, Bruce, who is also a proponent. So there's plenty of experts out there to talk about how well this will benefit our county. But we would like to have you go on record to please contact us. We know that you can't do anything right now. You're a lovely captive audience, and I do appreciate that. But you have my name and phone number, and you have Shreya's, and you'll have another speaker pretty soon. And I'm going to give you back 40 seconds. You take care. Thank you."
Thank you. Next is Nancy Dabu.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having me here today. I am also here in support of AB 626, aka MECO, which, by the way, I think is the cutest name, and on that alone, I hope you'll consider it. I'm also a proponent of and in support of a legal pathway that prioritizes health and safety to operating micro enterprise home kitchen operations. And I don't have anything nearly as substantive to say as my predecessors. But I'll be honest, I'm here because my daughter, until a month ago, attended Acacia Elementary in Thousand Oaks where I live, and they have a multicultural night once a year. And I don't know if the other elementary schools do it, but I haven't really heard of them. And we came in 2020, but Anna was homeschooled that first year, so I wasn't part of the Acacia community. And let me tell you, that was super lonely. I didn't have any mom friends. I didn't have friends. I was starting to think, you know, what did I do? And as soon as Anna entered Acacia, I found my people. I found a community. I found third places. We have kids around at our house almost every day now, and it's something I honestly didn't think would exist in 2025 now. It absolutely does exist. So I do love Thousand Oaks. But when multicultural night came up, I emailed the PTA and I said, "So who does the Philippines booth?" And they're like, "What Philippines booth? There's no Philippines booth." So for the last several years, I've done the Philippines booth, and thankfully, another parent has stepped up to take over it now that Anna is proceeding to Redwood Middle School. In the course of doing the Philippines booth, I got to serve Acacia students and their families a lot of their first tastes of Filipino food. I would serve ube ice cream. Some of you know it as taro. It's the purple stuff. That's sweet. I would serve deep-fried lumpia. Those are little egg rolls that are very traditional in our culture. I would serve pondi sal. That's our bread. Two of the three things I just named, though, I can't sell out of my home. Lumpia is typically deep-fried. It's only good right when you eat it. So I had to air fry it on-site at Acacia so that it wouldn't be soggy and awful. And so the nearest place to buy that is Camarillo. And you can't get delivery from it. If you go there and bring it back, by the time it came back to Acacia, it would be horrible. There aren't a ton of Filipino people in Thousand Oaks, and we don't have the population to support a brick-and-mortar store. We just don't. But there are a lot of people here who would love to try some Filipino food if they could. So that's one of two things I'd like to make out of my home. And I, now that we're not at Acacia anymore, I really hope you'll support AB 626 so that we can continue to have, I don't mean to make it sound like I'm the only person making Filipino food in the entire city of Thousand Oaks. I doubt that, but I would like to continue to have it available. The other reason I'm here is my husband is insistent that I should sell my cinnamon rolls. According to him, my cinnamon rolls are the best in the world, and no others compare. So naturally, I order cinnamon rolls everywhere I go now, even if they're $16, to try to learn how to perfect the craft. And I can't sell the cinnamon rolls out of my home because they use a cream cheese frosting, and cream cheese is on the list of items that are not allowed to be sold out of a home kitchen because they require refrigeration. I completely understand that. I think that it would be helpful, though, to have a way to regulate people like me who want to sell pretty innocent products, like cinnamon rolls, out of their homes and ensure that we're following the proper health and safety and refrigeration standards. So I hope you'll consider supporting us and getting in the ear of the city council to get some support out for MECO. And if nothing else, I hope you'll contact us and ask any questions you may have because Filipino food, cinnamon rolls, Thousand Oaks, they will go really well together, I promise. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is our consent calendar with the minutes of May 19, 2025, Planning Commission meeting. Is there any of our fellow commissioners have any comments or motion to approve the minutes? Thank you.
I move that we approve the minutes of, what was the date?
May 19, 2025. Okay, thank you. We could have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bus?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Yes.
Chair Ferris?
Yes.
Motion carries 3-0. Commissioners Lanson and McMahon absent.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda are public hearings, and we are going to open the public hearing presenting on behalf of staff. Is, actually, should we ask the secretary to open the public hearing, then we'll hear from staff? All right, thank you.
Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby opened to consider Agenda Item 7A, Precise Plan of Design 2024-70031 and Protected Tree Permit, PTP 2025-70010, to allow demolition of an existing 4,078-square-foot two-story house, pool, and 708-square-foot garage to accommodate the construction of a new 7,209-square-foot two-story residence with attached 1,151-square-foot four-car garage, covered exterior areas, new pool retaining walls, and associated hardscape resulting in an increase of total floor area by 205% of the existing dwelling and encroachment into the protected zones of four Coast Live oak Quercus agrofolia trees along the driveway entry to a 3.54-acre lot in the RPD-1.5U-SP zone, and find that project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA) guidelines pursuant to Section 15303A, "New construction or conversion of small structures located within the mixed-use MU zone located at 1958 Smoky Ridge Avenue." The applicant is Sean Trujillo, Arc Design Group, Inc.
Great. Thank you very much. Presenting on behalf of staff, Senior Planner Ian Holt.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. So with that great preamble by Mary Kate, basically, the presentation is to cover the item before you, the demolition and construction of the single-family home at 1958 Smoky Ridge Avenue. And yeah, there's two components to the request, as previously stated. One, find that the project's exempt as under SEQA, for new construction or conversion of small structures under the SEQA guidelines. And also approve the precise plan of design for the house and the protected tree permit. The reason that this item is before you is because the proposed addition or reconstruction of the home exceeds 150% of the original building floor area. The protected tree permit is accompanying the entitlement with you, but if it didn't require a PPD in front of the Planning Commission, it would be handled administratively by staff. So the subject property is located in specific Plan 4, which is Westlake North Ranch, which was approved back in 1972. It's lot 345 of the fifth phase of tract 3507, recorded back in 1983. The existing house was approved as part of the residential plan development permit. Existing house was approved as part of the residential plan development permit 8274, minor modification number 22, specifically for 17 new homes in the vicinity back in June 1988. The property to the north and the west is preserved as open space. Subject property is a regularly shaped lot, it's about 3.54 acres in size. The house pad location is situated at the end of an approximately 350-foot long driveway off the end of Smoky Ridge Avenue cul-de-sac. The existing two-story house is approximately 4,078 square feet with a 708 square foot garage, pool, retaining walls, and associated hardscape associated for the usable yard areas in the manufactured slopes. What you have here on the screen on the left is just basically the existing footprints in the pad area as it is today, and on the right, you just kind of have a representation of the topography, and you can see essentially the, the flat area of the site, or relatively flat area of the site where the home was initially constructed. The project site has varying topography with the house pad approximately 40 feet above the street elevation, and the northern property line is about another 52 feet above that pad elevation. The site area does have slopes of 25% or greater of natural slope, however, those are in areas that are untouched by the proposed project. The southern portion of the subject property outlined in green on the lower left-hand side is a restricted use area to preserve the natural slope environment and hillside areas in accordance to the goals and policies of the general plan at the time. The proposed development also cited to take advantage of the existed grading pad in order to minimize disturbing sensitive habitat areas possibly and retain the existing, oh, excuse me, driveway configuration and fire department turnaround. On the right, you have just a representation of the building footprint. What's lightly outlined in red is the second story floor area, just to kind of give you an idea of the first and second story elements from a plan view. So here you have just a rendering looking southwest at the site, and you can see the proposed retaining walls leading up to the yard improvements adjacent to the house. The new two-story house is five bedrooms with a total living floor area of approximately 7,000 square feet. The first floor will encompass about 3,778 square feet, and the second story will be about 3,431 square feet. The proposed project totals 8,360 gross square feet, which includes the garage, and that exceeds the original house square footage by 205%. In analyzing the project, it meets all the laws, regulations, and policies, including the North Ranch Design Guidelines that are specific to tract 3507, which contain design restrictions for architectural character, security gates, pilasters, fencing, and window awnings, roofs, color, and facade materials. The proposed residence is also located in a neighborhood that's predominantly two-story homes. The home utilizes the existing pad grade of the, of the existing house. The application is conditioned to seek the Westlake Ranch Property Owners Association approval, and the architecture is also consistent with other homes in the area and utilizes a combination of gable and hip-end roofs features. Materials for the building include clay tile roofing, stone veneer, smooth stucco, ironwork railing, and windows that include bronze contrast framing. Under the architectural guidelines, the maximum height for the building is 32 feet, which is greater than the applicant's building height request of 31 feet. The project is located in the neighborhood very low, land use designation under the general plan, and it's currently zoned RPD 1.5U-SP, which is indicative of the Westlake North Ranch specific plan number four. The RPD zoning density is not proposed to change with the project and is consistent with the general plan. Single-family dwellings and accessory uses such as decks, balconies, swimming pools, parking, parking spaces, et cetera, all allowed under the RPD zone. The table before you basically demonstrates how the project complies with all of the minimum setback criteria, open space allotment, as well as parking for the site. As part of the project, though it does capitalize on the existing pad area that's been established by the previous home, the one area of grading that would occur is primarily on the eastern edge of the billing pad, and you can see it here in Section B, where some additional retaining walls and fill will help accommodate the 20-foot usable yard area that is necessary to comply with the architectural guidelines. Section A basically demonstrates how the existing driveway, retaining wall, and the house footprint and the pad remains the same with the pool extending out a little bit, but that, for the most part, does not require any additional fill or retaining structures to accommodate that. Other components associated with the project is the entry design improvements. There will be a new gate that will be replacing the existing one, also property line fencing, and installing walls for a new trash enclosure and a vehicle turnaround area just off to the right of the driveway. These improvements are consistent with the tract design guidelines for driveway entry design and setbacks, and as seen on this slide, the scope of these improvements encroach into the protected zones of four oak trees, which necessitates the need for the protected The Arborist Reports identified five trees on the site, three onsite oak trees and two off-site. Four are immediately within the vicinity of the proposed driveway entry improvements. Tree 505 is not being impacted by the proposed work, and that's located about 30 feet up slope from the existing driveway. The level of encroachment includes utility trenching, fence posts, pavement, and wall foundations into the trees' protected zones, which is basically the drip line plus five feet. Any digging or trenching within the tree-protected zone of an oak tree must be done with hand tools. Condition number 33 includes the requirements for tree protection and maintenance during And here you just basically have another exhibit. What you have kind of highlighted in green are those actual encroachment areas. The fence line does continue off to the left a little bit into that protected zone. For the most part, that's the level of encroachment that we're talking about. Also to note that off-site tree here on the left-hand side overhangs the driveway, and they'll need some pruning just to observe some driveway clearance requirements, since the fire department will need to access the driveway. And just to give you kind of a perspective on the context of the proposed home, on the left you have an aerial shot of the existing home, and on the right is a rendering of the, the new home in its, in the context, in the context of the neighborhood. The proposed home is situated the furthest away from any of the neighboring homes, and the two closest adjacent homes are approximately 160 to 372 feet away. So with that, staff's determined that the proposed project is in scale with and articulately consistent with residences in the immediate area and will not result in a dwelling that would be out of character with the neighborhood. As the lot size can accommodate the proposed residence and ancillary structures, staff recommends approval of Precise Plan Development 2024-70031 and Protected Tree Permit 2025-70010 based on the findings and subject to the conditions of the Planning Commission resolution. And with that, that would conclude my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Fantastic. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments of staff? I just have a few, I just wanted for a few confirming things. One, the oak trees are, in fact, just for encroachment, they are there for the driveway improvements, and they'll still stay in place, they just have to be really careful about doing the improvements around them, right?
Correct.
Okay. For the, and in general, the, the building, or the, the new home, as you sort of said, with the setbacks and a variety of that, and the, the height itself, all generally meet standards, we're not being asked for some waiver from, from the conditions, correct?
Correct. No modifications being requested.
And then for the, the grading plan, could you, I, I couldn't tell if it's sort of like balanced within it, or are they going to be bringing fill in for, for some of that?
Well, you can ask the architect. I did have a conversation with them. Based on the plans, the, the goal is to balance the site, because as you, with, between the demolition and the balancing of the existing yard areas, there is anticipating of using that dirt to fill in.
Because I would think if we're going to fill it, we would, I mean, there would be trucks coming in, and we would want to have conditions associated with that if that is not intended to be balanced.
That would be further evaluated during the grading plan review, but at this time, it's not anticipated to bring in any fill.
Those are the confirming questions, I think, I had. Just want to double check with the commission, do you have any others? Great. Okay. Next, we'll ask the applicant or applicant's representative to, to come speak. We have Sean Trujillo. If you could come to the podium, state your name, city, or residence, you have 15 minutes.
Sean Trujillo, I'm a resident of Camarillo. I'm with Arc Design Group, our office is in Thousand Oaks. We're the architectural office assisting Tom and Megan Kelleher with the design of their new home at 1958 Smoky Ridge Avenue. First, thank you, Commissioners, for your time this evening, and thank you, Ian, for your presentation and getting us to this meeting. Tom and Megan approached our office several years ago to design a home that added volume, additional footage, and an open plan that took advantage of the amazing views their 3.5 acre flag lot has to offer. The lot may be the largest in the Westlake Ranch community, if it's not the largest, it's one of the largest. After working with Tom and Megan for some time, we created a project that we are proud of and one we think the Kellehers are excited about. The proposed project is Tuscan-influenced and conducive with the Mediterranean styling of many of the Westlake Ranch homes. On this flag lot, the proposal calls for keeping much of the existing driveway and working within the existing developed and previously graded areas, including our fire department access requirements. The project architecture, as you see it, is unchanged from our HOA submittal, which occurred 17 months ago, and received HOA approval in March of 2024. We began our PPD process in April of last year, as well as the fire department review for water availability and fire vehicle access, we received fire department approval in June of 2024. The project was posted in July of 2024, and we received the initial planning check sheet on September 10 of '24, which requested an arborist report for the oak trees that occur at the entry to the property, two being off-site. We are proposing to keep all oak trees. In January of this year, an additional request from planning was made for Arborist to document all trees being removed around our proposed home and include them all in the arborist report. Also requested was embellishment of the gate and fencing plan and a requirement to submit a biology memo. No additional protected trees were identified. We and the owners have complied with all requested documentation as of March 11 of this year. To note, we lost our previous planner, and Ian was assigned to our project in May, so we lost a couple more months getting to this meeting. We are all anxious to move to the next phase of processing and would ask the Commissioners to join the HOA and planning staff in support of the project and moving the Kellehers forward. Thank you, and I'll be available for any project questions.
Okay. Great. And just as a note, the Kellehers are here for questions only, if the Commissioner has any. Does the Commissioner have any questions? Nope. Would you be kind enough to speak to the grading plan question that I had about the cut and fill and attempt to balance?
Yeah, I mean, I had that specific conversation with our civil, and the spoils from the foundation and the pool are anticipated to balance onsite, but there may be some trucks that are needed. I'm not anticipating 10 truck fulls, but maybe a truck or two of 10 cubic yards of dirt each.
Okay. Given the condition, I think that was called to our attention, that's in the conditions about the grading plan that you would work with for the review and grading plan, are you fine with that condition?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'll ask staff about how they want to handle that, given some of the comments, but I just wanted to make sure you're able to do that. Any questions from the commission? Okay. Thank you. You'll have the opportunity to rebut at the end.
Thank you.
We do have one speaker, Rick Katz, if you'd like to come up. State your name, city, residence, you have five minutes.
Hi, Rick Katz, and I'm at 1957 Smoky Ridge Avenue in Westlake Village, and I just want to say that I've seen the design, and I know the location of the home. It's directly above me, and I'm completely in support of it. It will add a tremendous amount of value to our neighborhood. It's going to be gorgeous, and it will most likely inspire other homeowners in the area to possibly take on remodel projects of their own and just help our economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Katz? Nope, that's it. So we'll now go back to staff and see if there's any additional comments or things that you have regarding some of the testimony.
Well, if you, based on the conversation you were inquiring about the grading permit, so I'll just point out that under the engineering conditions, specifically 51 and 52, they deal with the grading permit as well as the hauling of import and export of materials. So as part of the normal grading permit evaluation process, the haul route, as well as the, any import will be evaluated under that permit.
Okay. And you're comfortable with those conditions, given the potential for fill that might have to come in?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any questions of staff? Okay. We are now at rebuttal. You have five minutes to rebut if you'd like to come and say any additional.
I would be rebuting myself, I think.
It's your five minutes, so, all right. Thanks. I think we are at time, and what I'll do is I'll close the public hearing, and I'll open the floor up for discussion and/or motion.
I agree with Mr. Katz. I think we need to get these people building, so I'd be happy to make a motion.
Please do.
I move that we adopt a resolution approving the project based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained therein, affirming, one, the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15303A, new construction or conversion of small structures of the SEQA guidelines, and, two, approval of Precise Plan of Design PPD 2024-731 and PTP 2025-710.
Great. Thank you. Any comments to the motion at all?
I will, I will say one thing, it's like, this is big, but I think, given the nature of what the pad size and what's being asked and meeting within the conditions of it, I see no reason why it shouldn't be approved, so for that reason, I'll, I'll support, especially that we're keeping the oak trees and only using it for encroachment purposes, so. Any other comments to the motion? If not, if we could get a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bus?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Yes.
Chair Ferris?
Yes.
Motion carries 3-0, with Commissioner Lanson absent and Commissioner McMahon absent.
All right. Thank you. There is an appeal period. Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the Planning Commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with Community Development Department within 10 days. Thank you. We will now go on to Case 8A, Policies and Procedures for Conducting Public Hearings for Mobile Home Rent Adjustment, Just and Reasonable Return Applications. Presenting on behalf of staff is Community Development Analyst Lynn Oshita.
On May 19, the commissioners approved Resolution 08-25PC, establishing policies and handling cases involving mobile home just and reasonable return applications. After further review, staff recommends some additional minor changes to this policy to align the standard rent control hearing procedures. The first change pertains to debt services. After reviewing the city's municipal code, staff found that the net cash flow determination in the commission's policy needed to be consistent with the city council-approved policy. Areas of financing of the cost of the park have been removed in the proposed resolution. The second change extends the time allowed for testimony during public hearings. Staff recommends increasing the policy from 15 minutes to 45 minutes for both the applicant group and the tenant group. Additionally, rebuttal time will be increased from 10 minutes to 15 minutes. This adjustment will help ensure a fair hearing process for the commission. And finally, the proposed resolution includes clarification and cleanup items. Staff recommends that the commission adopt the proposed resolution and find that this action is not a project under SEQA. This concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments or questions of staff? If not, I will go through this, we have no public comments. Do we want to go back for staff for follow-up comments? Are there any questions that anyone has on this? Is there anything that you wanted to bring up? Sorry to tell, look at that. Okay, I'm gonna, I think we're going to close off this and open the floor for discussion and a motion. Yes.
I will say that I like the fact that we're extending the time for people to respond. This is good, because this could ultimately be a complex issue, and with expert testimony and things like that, I think that it's good that we're giving more time to the applicant. So yeah, I would absolutely support it and move that we approve it.
If you want to go ahead and make the motion.
Sure, all right. I move that we find that this action is not a project as defined under SEQA, and that we adopt a resolution revising policies and procedures for conducting public hearings for mobile home rent adjustment, just and reasonable return applications, and rescinding Resolution Number 08-2025PC.
Okay, thank you. Any comments to the motion? I just want to concur, I think that these are good revisions to provide this, and I think that we want to make sure that we're giving due process during this, so I think these are very prudent, and we'll support the motion. Any final comments? Okay, if we could get a roll call.
Commissioner Bus? Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Yes.
Chair Ferris?
Yes.
Motion carries. Commissioners Lanson and Commissioners McMahon absent.
Okay, thank you. Now's the time for commission comments and/or any AB 1234 reports. Are there any comments from fellow commissioners? None from me either. Zalaya Melikhar, are there any follow-up items, announcements, or upcoming issues?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Tomorrow evening, July 8, the Community Development Department will have the following items on the city council agenda. The department report on the downtown Thousand Oaks General Plan Amendment initiation and concurrent processing request, a consent calendar item for reappointment of resident commissioner to the area housing authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners, and a consent calendar item for Los Angeles County Animal Control Services contract. Also, on August 26, there will be a public hearing on ordinance updates related to Senate Bill 9, urban lot splits, and two unit housing developments that you heard at your last meeting, it's been a little while, a study session on the comprehensive zoning code update, study session number one, findings and recommendations. Moving on to planning commission items that are upcoming, on August 25, it will be a busy night. We have a public hearing to establish a new drive-through restaurant use within an existing building at 400 North Moor Park Road, a public hearing on Conejo Summit for 15 new industrial buildings, and with, located at the intersection of Conejo Center Drive and Rancho Conejo Boulevard, and also a study session on the comprehensive zoning code update. That also will be for the findings and recommendations, and that's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you all. We're now going to adjourn to the next meeting on August 25, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. Thanks, everyone.
Recording stopped.